Before I call this meeting to order, I want to acknowledge the presence of student protesters in the room. Welcome to the meeting. We will proceed with the agenda as published. We'll now open the Austin P. Board of Trustees Meeting. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Present.
Trustee Kanata is absent. Trustee Jenkins.
Present.
Trustee Moore.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Mealer.
Present.
Trustee O'Malley is absent. Trustee McInnis.
Present.
Trustee Rowe.
Present.
Trustee Simler.
Present.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Before we start the meeting, Dr. Gary Luck, retired U.S. Army General and an inaugural member of the Austin P. State University Board of Trustees, passed away on August 14th at the age of 87. General Luck was a highly decorated warrior and military leader who gained a reputation as a soldier's soldier. During his 36-year distinguished military career, General Luck led troops in combat during Vietnam operations Desert Storm and Desert Shield, is head of the Joint Special Operations Command. After retirement, he continued his life of service as a chief of the Senior Mentor Program in Suffolk, Virginia. As a senior mentor, he trained and guided tens of thousands of soldiers, sailors, Marines, and airmen, including every flag and general officer in the art and science of joint warfareing over a 20-year period spanning the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. General Luck brought that same level of commitment to his role as trustee. In June, this board honored him with the Board of Trustees Military Service Award. It was a pleasure and honor to serve with him. We send our condolences to General Luck's loved ones. General Luck was an incredible human being. He was not only a patriot, but he was a major supporter of Austin P. and all of Austin P.'s policies. He did a great job with military retirees. He was just, and he was the same to every person, every board member, every student, everybody on the executive board, and he will be sorely missed, and I think all of us learned a whole lot from Gary Luck during his tenure. So let's give him my hand. Please note that there are items on your agenda that need to be adopted. There are no items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? I move for adoption of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
I hear the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. The minutes for the June 7th, 2024 Board Meeting were circulated in advance. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Minutes are approved. In accordance with Tennessee law, if there had been requests from the public to address the board, it would occur at this point in the meeting. However, the board did not receive any requests, so we will move on to the next agenda item. I recognize President Lakari, who introduced today's campus spotlight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Rich Mifsud is the Director of the Institute for National Security and Military Studies. Previously, he spent 30 years in the California Army National Guard, retiring as a Colonel. He was the Director of Plans, Operations, and Security for California, overseeing the day-to-day operations in support of mitigating the many natural disasters in that state specifically during fire season. He has multiple master's degrees, including a master's in Strategic Studies from the United States Army War College, and earned a doctorate of Education in Organizational Change and Leadership from the University of Southern California. Rich, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. I'm Dr. Richard Mifsud. I'm the Director for the Institute of National Security and Military Studies. I'd like to quickly introduce our professors that we have at the institute: Dr. Rudy Baker, Dr. Erin Carlin, and Dr. Simon Rotzer. The Institute for National Security Military Studies was established officially in 2021 through a vote and appropriation from the state of Tennessee legislatures. Approximately $2.3 million was given to the institute over three years, starting in FY 2022, and then ending last, this last year, in 2024. The intent for the establishment of the institute was to tie into the Fort Campbell community with research in military studies and creation of a Bachelor of Science in National Security Studies targeted for active-duty soldiers, veterans, families, National Guard reservists, to name a few. I would like to highlight several accomplishments that we've had over the last two years, starting with the speaker series. Through an elaborate, or through a collaboration of efforts, we've had eight speakers to date discussing on a variety of national security topics, from cyber to intelligence, and from relations with Russia to the current state of security in the corporate world. Many of our speakers have been practitioners with their related topic, who gave their audience their firsthand knowledge of what happens on the ground. This has been especially important to students who are interested in the various fields of national security. Also, some of our guest researchers have presented relevant information to our audience, such as how Russian politics work, and how the mind of Vladimir Putin and his current advisors are advising him in the war in the Ukraine. Next, our Bachelor of Science in National Security's degree is the first and only of its kind in the southeastern United States. It started in the fall of 2022, and since last fall, we've put more courses focused and aligned with national security in a revitalized curriculum, which now offers students three different concentrations: one in intelligence, one in geographical information systems, and the other in corporate security. These courses are predominantly online, as it is targeted towards service members. However, some of the courses can be hybrid, which assists those students who are drawing VA benefits, such as the military housing benefit, allowance benefit, and they need those classes in person. Also, it offers students who are looking for that traditional college experience to be able to come to campus and take classes. We've grown from three students in 2022 to currently 48, and we're still growing. Our next highlight is the partnerships that we've established across the community, across the state, and then abroad as well. Last February, we signed a partnership with the Institute of International Politics and Economics in Belgrade, Serbia, or IIP-E. They are the oldest research institute in Eastern Europe, established by Tito in 1947. We're the first and only U.S. institution partnered with IIP-E, while some of its other most notable partners are China and Russia currently. With our partnership, we were able to get the U.S. Embassy Belgrade back into IIP-E, something that hasn't happened in the last 20 years. Faculty have participated in IIP-E's winter school in March, and have published papers in one of their security journals with other European authors. In this slide, you can see President Lakari is signing our memorandum of agreement in Belgrade, Serbia, in February of 2024, with their, with IIP-E's institute director, Branislav Dordovich. The institute has also partnered with the Clarksville Montgomery County School System Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, and sponsored some of their competitions in both the fall and the spring of last year. Most notably, the first-ever all-girls competition held by Rossview High School. And this is, in this slide, it's Dr. Erin Carlin is presenting the trophy that we sponsored to the winning team at the all-girls competition at Rossview The last partnership I want to highlight is our sponsorship of the Tennessee and Kentucky National Guard. We've participated in both states' officer and enlisted associations, which have led to some of the increase in our students, but it has also opened doors for future events. So on this particular slide, it is members of the Army and Air National Guard from Tennessee boarding a C-17 plane bound for Bulgaria, which is Tennessee's state partner, and I'll discuss that in a bit, but they're going to a two-week training exercise with the Bulgarian military. So our vision is to be the southeast's premier national security institute by far. We're going to achieve this by expanding our footprint in Eastern Europe, utilizing the National Guard State Partnership Program and our subject matter expertise. We're building the first academic tri-star collaboration, utilizing departments, colleges, and institutes from other universities in Tennessee to focus on national security issues, putting Tennessee as the hub of national security. With China and Russia exerting more presence and a dominating role in the Balkans, the first-ever Balkan Security Review will be held in November 2024. We've been invited by the U.S. Embassy to participate as members of several panels alongside General Koboli, the European Command Commander, members of the Marshall Center in Garmisch, Germany, representatives from the Office of Secretary of Defense, and the Serbian Defense University, which is their version of West Point. In this slide, Dr. Carlin and Dr. Baker have handed out some of our swag to the, to members at the University of, I'm sorry, at the U.S. Embassy in Belgrade that we've been currently working with. So as previously stated, our expansion in Eastern Europe will be on the back of the National Guard State Partnership Program. If you don't know what the National Guard State Partnership Program is, it is a program that was started by the Department of State in 1993 after the breakup of the Soviet Union. So 13 original states, or 13 states were originally partnered with 13 other nations in hopes of getting those 13 nations actually into NATO. Some of them have gotten into NATO, some of them haven't. An example of that is Tennessee was one of the first states in 1993, and it partnered with Bulgaria. Pennsylvania was another state, it partnered with Lithuania. Michigan partnered with Latvia, California partnered with Ukraine, and Poland and Illinois has a strong partnership. Those all began in 1993, and ever since then, it's grown to where all 54 states and territories have at least one partner. Most states have two partners, or sometimes three, like Texas. We're currently working with Ohio, who is in Serbia, with slight movement towards Hungary, who's Serbia's other partner. We've been in, we've met with the Tennessee National Guard and working on a plan to establish partnerships inside Bulgaria as well. Tennessee has a bid in the National Guard Bureau for a second partner, and that partner they're shooting for is Greece. I have, and I still have my ties to the Ukraine and the embassy there, and I've been in communication with them about trying to do some stuff, but we won't be going into the Ukraine. That's just, that'll be all virtual. Coincidentally, with Tennessee's bid to Greece, we've been in contact with the Research Institute for European and American Studies in Athens, Greece, or Ries, as they're called. This potential partnership will enable National Security Studies students to annually attend four-week session training in Athens, Greece, where they'll work with Greek, U.S., and other allies along, as well as institutions on real intelligence issues that are going on in that region. They'll gather invaluable, out-of-the-classroom experiences that you can't get anywhere else, and they also get credit for an internship for the four weeks that they're there. The cost is approximately $10,000 for two students, which the institute will be able to cover this year for the first time. Greece, Ries took an interest in our institute because of our footprint inside the Balkans right now, and they, because Greece has an immense watchful eye on what's happening in the Balkans, as it directly affects the country of Greece. And then lastly, one of our goals is to establish relationships with corporations and agencies in the Montgomery County and Nashville, to enable students to participate in internship programs and get them the experience needed, as well as get them employed after graduation. For those students who are not currently active duty and local, this helps get them started in a national security career at the ground level. This concludes our presentation. I want to thank you for your attention, and do you have any questions?
Afterwards, I'd like to meet with you just a second. I think there's some things I could add.
Sure.
Might be interested in.
Yes, sir. Any further questions? Any additional discussion?
I'd just like to say-
Very interesting presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and especially expands to further partnership we have with our military partners and agencies and helping students, and so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Academic Affairs Committee Report. I recognize Trustee May, Chair of the Academic Affairs Committee, to give us report of the Academic Affairs Committee meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Jenkins. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Academic Affairs Committee meeting. The committee met and approved minutes from the Academic Affairs Committee meeting on June 7th, 2024. The committee had no action items for board approval. Provost Maria Cronly presented four information items: degree and certificate awards by type and academic year, program productivity report, Fall Census enrollment, letter of notification to THEC regarding Master of Science and Quantitative Methods. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee May. I recognize Trustee Mealer, Chair of the Audit Committee, to give us report of the committee meeting.
Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from today's Audit Committee meeting. The committee approved the minutes from the June 7th, 2024 Audit Committee meeting. The committee also reviewed and approved one action item, the fiscal year 2025 salaries and budget. The committee heard presentations on the following information items: A, internal audit reports released between May 10th, 2024, and August 22nd, 2024, with a list of outstanding audit recommendations; B, external audit report; and C, Office of the Internal Audit FY 2024 Audit Report. That concludes my report of the Audit Committee meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Mealer. Next, we have Business Finance Committee Report. I recognize Trustee Rowe to give us report of the committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Business and Finance Committee meeting. The committee met and approved the minutes from the June 7th, 2024 Committee meeting. The committee considered and approved one action item needing consideration of the board: expenditures for campus-wide roof repairs. That concludes my report.
Trustee Rowe, do you have a motion on the expenditures for campus-wide roof repairs?
Your meeting materials included information on the expenditures for campus-wide roof repairs. By direction of the committee, I move to approve the expenditures for campus-wide roof repairs.
You've heard the motion to approve the expenditures for campus-wide roof repairs. Since this is a motion of the committee, a second is not required. Is there any discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Moore. Thank you, Trustee Moore. Trustee Moore is a non-voting representative. Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee Mealer.
Yes.
Trustee McInnis.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Simler.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll have an Executive Committee report. The next agenda is a report from this morning's Executive Committee meeting. The committee approved the minutes from the September 15th, 2023 Executive Committee meeting. There were no action or information items. Next, we have Student Affairs Committee Report. I recognize Trustee McInnis, Chair of the Student Affairs Committee, to give us report of the committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from this morning's Student Affairs Committee meeting. The committee met and approved the minutes from the June 7th, 2024 Committee meeting. There were no action items on the agenda. Vice President of Student Affairs, Dr. Leonard Clemens, presented the following information items: Advisory Council on Student Affairs, Governor's Hockey Club, and lastly, the Implementing Engage the Student Affairs Strategic Plan. Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to recognize that one of our Advisory Council members flew in from the Northeast to be here today, and he's in the audience, as well as other members of this new group. So thank you to the committee, and also thank you to the Division of Student Affairs, because since our last board meeting, it's been the fall semester has launched, and I know there's members of the division here for that. So thank you for helping a smooth transition into the fall semester for our students. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee McInnis. Next, under Other Business, we're being asked to approve several naming requests for spaces on campus. Prior to asking for a motion, I invite Mr. Chris Phillips, Vice President of Alumni Engagement and Philanthropy and Executive Director of APSU Foundation, to provide information on the naming request. And since he is not here, we will, he is busy being a grandfather, I would guess, right now. So next, we'll have Brad Avery. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'm Dr. Phillips, but I am honored to be called up from the monitors to be here this morning. Thank you. Good morning, members of the Board of Trustees and guests. It is exciting to present to you today, as we continue to have more alumni and friends enhancing the customer life experience here at ALSU. We have several naming requests to consider today, with four of them inside the under-construction Health Professions Building. These requests represent our commitment to honoring individuals that have profoundly impacted our institution and our community. Each proposed naming request meets the requirements outlined in APSU Policy 7-009, and the respective committees recommend the following. The indoor golf facility in the Dunn Center at Austin P. State University is being named after Karen Edwards in honor of her and her family's loyal giving to APSU athletics. The Edwards family is heavily involved with APSU and have profoundly supported the university and its athletic programs since Karen graduated from Austin P. in 1978. In addition to supporting APSU, Karen was also deeply involved in both women's golf and youth golf programs throughout Clarksville. When Karen passed in June of this year, Tom and their daughters, Amy and Emily, wanted to honor her in a special way. The naming of the Karen Edwards Indoor Golf Facility helps beat the skull with the naming in honor of Karen in perpetuity. The theater, located inside the trainroom building at Austin P. State University, is being named after Doctors Sarah and Mike Gocher in honor of Dr. Mike Gocher's gift to the Department of Theater and Dance and the Department of Communication to honor his late wife, Dr. Sarah Gocher, who passed in January of 2023. A native of Clarksville, Sarah graduated in 1976 from Clarksville High School, then graduated with a bachelor's degree from the Department of Speech, Communication, and Theater at Austin P. in 1981. After earning a Master of Fine Arts at the University of Florida and a PhD in Theater at LSU, she earned her Actors Equity Card and worked in professional theater in the southeast before returning to Austin P. in 1990. Sarah taught as a theater and dance faculty member for 25 years. During his long professional career with Austin P., Mike served as a professor, Chair of the Department of Communication, and Interim Dean of the College of Graduate Studies. The naming of Sarah and Mike Gocher Theater honors Sarah and Mike's academic legacy at Austin P., the place where they met. The following will all take place in the under-construction Health Professions Building. With a pledge to the area of psychology in the College of Behavioral and Health Sciences, Jaclyn and Christopher George created the Jamaica St. George Scholarship Endowment to honor their late son's legacy. Jamaica was known as a kind and loving son, husband, and exceptional sailor who joined the Navy on January 26th, 2015. He was soon to receive his Information Warfare qualification prior to his 2018 passing. David and Joanna Smith established the De'Aaron "D." Smith Scholarship Endowment in honor of their late son to support students pursuing careers in social work at the College of Behavioral and Health Sciences. De'Aaron always expressed how important David was to him as a father and as a friend. With David's dedication to social work, Nan Joanna decided to create a lasting scholarship to commemorate their son's memory. With a pledge to support nursing, Debbie and David Winters established the Colonel Debbie Elaine Tipton Winters RN MSN MSS, U.S. Army Retired Endowment Fund of Excellence at Austin P. Debbie worked as an adjunct faculty member with the APSU School of Nursing, and her passion for APSU and nursing inspired her and David to create this endowment. Dr. Ernie and Joan Dewall, along with Joan's sister, former First Lady of Tennessee Tech University, Jeanette Valp, established the Dewall Valp Nursing Fund of Excellence with a commitment to support the APSU school of nursing in the spring of 2024. This fund will provide unrestricted funds for the school of nursing to support faculty and staff. The Dewalls have contributed in a significant way to support a variety of areas at Austin P. over the last 15 years. Together, they established the William and Josephine Dewall Nursing Endowment in memory of Ernie's parents, and in 2012, the Dewalls established the lead gift for the APSU farm facility expansion project. More information on all of these naming requests are available in your packets. Thank you.
You heard the explanation from Mr. Avery. We will take action on the recommendations as a group. Do I hear a motion to approve the naming request as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the naming request. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Avery. The next item on our agenda is Strategic Plan Update. I recognize President Lakari for opening remarks.
Thank you, Chair Jenkins. It is my pleasure to hand it off to Vice President for Legal Affairs and Institutional Strategy, Mr. Danell Whiteside, for a report on our strategic plan.
Good morning, Chair Jenkins and members of the APSU Board of Trustees. It is a pleasure to be here today to report on the significant progress that we've made in the second year of our Experience Austin P. 2022 to 2027 Strategic Plan. This plan is more than just a roadmap. It's a commitment to enhancing every aspect of the APSU experience for our students, faculty, staff, and the broader community. Today, I'm excited to share how our collective efforts have brought this vision closer to reality. So let me remind you of where we've been. As you recall, you approved the university's mission, vision, and value statements in December of 2021, and then approved the Experience Austin P. 2022 to 2027 Strategic Plan in June of 2022. The plan consists of four pillars: the academic experience, the student experience, the employee experience, and the community experience. And since then, we have set about the incredible work of pressing towards our goals, and I'm really excited to share with you the progress on that today. So our first pillar, academic excellence, we have seen transformative progress there. We have made great strides in improving our online instruction. Through the APSU Applying Quality Matters Rubik Training Initiative by Distance Education, an impressive 93% of our faculty have now completed certification. This not only raises the bar for online education, but also ensures a consistent, high-quality learning experience for our students. The fruits of our efforts in this area have been showing, as Forbes recently ranked us as the number-one best online college in Tennessee. Our focus on aligning academic programs with workforce needs has resulted in 62% of our programs undergoing evaluation through the MC Burning Glass Tool, and this is critical as we prepare our students to meet the demands of an ever-evolving job market. We've also increased the rigor of our retention, tenure, and promotion process, as well as the annual faculty evaluation criteria, placing a stronger emphasis on high-quality scholarship, including pedagogical research. And this will help trigger faculty improvement interventions more quickly, ensuring that our faculty remain at the forefront of academic excellence. And looking ahead, we're on track with our AACSB accreditation for the College of Business. As you all know, this has been a long process in the works, but we have an expected visit in '26-'27 academic year, and I believe this is a whole year ahead of schedule, which is a really, really great sign. Just in case you need reminding, we have a Health Professions Building that is well on its way to a fall 2025 completion. And if you haven't driven past there recently, it's really exciting to see the progress. I mean, it's really a statement piece for where it is on that corner. There is also a live camera feed there, if you're just curious to see the progress as it's gone along, that you can access online in real time. And as we know and are excited about, this is really going to be a game-changer for the academic experience for our Health Professions majors. Moving along to the student experience, we have implemented several initiatives aimed at enhancing the student success and engagement on our campus. We've introduced the Student Success Coaches for first-generation and limited financially-resourced students, a program that now supports about half of our student population. This personalized guidance is already showing positive outcomes in student retention and achievement. Our Strategic Enrollment Management Plan has seen a resounding success. You heard that a little bit earlier today. Our Strategic Enrollment Management Plan has seen a resounding success. You heard that a little bit earlier today, leading to increased enrollment over the past two years, with further growth anticipated for the twenty four, twenty five academic year. A cherry on top of our recruitment success will be the opening of the new O'Malley Family Welcome Center. We can see that that's already in the works, and that's expected to open in the spring, I hope. We know how construction goes, but we're excited about that. We've established a university college, which centralizes our student success initiatives and expands professional advising into the sophomore year. This really ensures that students have the support they need throughout their academic journey. In addition, we've aligned the Clarksville Campus and Fort Campbell Center terms and calendars, expanding course availability and providing greater flexibility for our students. We're also reimagining our living learning communities. You heard about that this morning within our residence halls. The launch of our handshake platform has been exciting to boost student employer engagement. The Gov. Success Initiative recently launched further enhances the success of our students and expanding the Little Gov. Center. So as you have already heard, we are really hitting our goals. Pillar three, the employee experience. We are committed to fostering a supportive and engaging work environment for our faculty and staff. We recently launched the President's Leadership Development Program, which will equip our scholar leaders with the skills they need to guide APSU into the future. We've secured a dedicated space in Woodward Library to significantly, to specifically house professional development resources for continuous learning and growth for our employees. This space is set to open in twenty twenty five. Last spring, we held our first-ever Artificial Intelligence Symposium, which gave faculty and staff the chance to learn from national experts and each other about the impact that AI will have on our work. Our Alternative Work Arrangement Survey was revised and distributed earlier this year, which gathered valuable feedback to help us create more flexible work options for our employees. We've also expanded employee resource groups, with initial meetings already being held, fostering a sense of community and support amongst our employees. Discussions are ongoing about onboarding new HR staff focused on recruitment and training, which is critical to our goals of attracting and retaining top talent. Additionally, we've implemented a new performance review process that emphasizes coaching and conversations, helping our employees really achieve their full potential, and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on our coaching conversations. Moving to community engagement, let's discuss our efforts in that area to strengthen ties with the community and which have yielded remarkable results. We successfully implemented and initiated the Leadership Exchange Series last year, which is designed to bring C-suite leaders to our campus to increase their partnership opportunities and engagement. We hosted four of those events in the inaugural year, which was met with enthusiasm and support from the community. And then our efforts to engage the military community have included appreciation events. You heard about the National Security Studies and their outreach efforts, partnerships with Fort Campbell. All those things have reinforced our commitment to those who serve. I'm pretty sure you've seen the flags around of Clarksville's hometown team, that campaign launched last year uniting APSU and the community through athletics. And I really believe that it's helped to create that shared sense of pride and identity. Looking ahead, we have planned a community showcase, which actually will be held tomorrow. It's Saturday, right? On Saturday? And our goal is really open our doors to the community, which we anticipate will further strengthen our bonds with our Clarksville friends and neighbors. We've also expanded our alumni engagement efforts, launching Gov. Gatherings in multiple cities and new cities, establishing new alumni chapters, ensuring that our graduates remain connected to their alma mater. Last but certainly not least, our Community Day of Service launched in twenty twenty three. We held it again this year in August, which saw nearly a threefold increase in participation, with a thousand five hundred and seventy-five volunteers contributing three thousand six hundred hours of service into the community. And this is a testament to the strong spirit of service that defines APSU. I wanted to show you just a quick highlight reel from that day. So we're on the move. While we have made tremendous strides towards reaching our goals, we're not resting on them. And at this year's convocation, President Lakari challenged us to be on the move. He emphasized the need to step up our efforts in four key areas: enhancing campus life and energy, improving enrollment in all aspects, improving student success, including or especially success after graduation, and laying the groundwork for the next comprehensive campaign. And then I have a little snippet to show that we shared at convocation for this year.
Graduates, congratulations on reaching the graduation stage. I know you will accomplish great things in the future. We are all proud of you. Undergraduates, you may now turn your tassels to the left.
So I have to special shout out Sean McCully and my PR marketing team who produced that video. In addition to other people within PR marketing, I'm really proud of how they continue to represent and promote the APSU brand. So moving forward, looking ahead to the twenty four, twenty five academic year, we've set new wildly important goals that will undergird the priorities that President Lakari outlined. You see here, pillar two, goal one, creating an inclusive community that affords every student the opportunity to have meaningful interactions and experiences. Pillar three, goal three, cultivating a culture of connectedness where employees intentionally engage with students to enrich the campus experience and influence student success. And under pillar four, goal one, we're continuing to develop and enhance mutually beneficial community partnerships, which will further solidify our role as a vital part of the Clarksville community. In closing, I'm extremely proud of the progress that we've made in year two of the Experience Austin P. strategic plan. As we look forward to the challenges and opportunities of the coming year, I'm confident that we will continue to build on this momentum. Why? Because we have an incredible team that's working together to reach our goals. I've listed a few people here on this slide, but let me tell you that the heavy lifting that we've done these last two years can only be possible with all hands on deck. And so I want to shout out all of our people, P E A Y P L E, for the work that they do day in and day out to support this plan and ultimately support students and their experience at Austin P. So thank you for this opportunity to present our progress toward accomplishing our goals for the strategic plan, and I'm open to any of your questions or comments at this time.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Whiteside? Danielle, we thank you for all that you all have done. We thank both of you for making the meeting today. She had strict instructions. She could not have the baby during the meeting. Thank you for following those instructions. The, it's, the progress that Austin P.'s making in every front is just incredible. And student success is obviously one of the most critical things that we have to maintain the students we have and to attract more students, and I congratulate you for your efforts. You've done a phenomenal job. Let's give them a hand. I recognize President Lakari to give his report and to also report on any interim items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Ms. Whiteside indicated, we started the year with a People in the Community Day of Service. We started that last year, and it was held during Homecoming Week. This year, we moved it to the first day of the semester, and that's where we will keep it because it's such a great way to kick off the academic year. And it was a resounding success. We had more than sixteen hundred students, faculty, and staff engaged in the community that day, providing more than thirty-six hundred hours of service to nonprofits and charities in the area. Shout out to Alexandra Wills, who is our Director of Community Engagement, for the work and organizations and logistics that she put in. It was everything from building the relationships with our community partners to ensuring that enough buses were available to get students, faculty, and staff to all of the locations around Montgomery County and beyond. So she really did a wonderful job spearheading that, and the day was a success, predominantly because of the work that she put in and the willingness of our campus community to step up to the plate and help those around them. We heard an enrollment update earlier from Provost Cronley, and in comparing apples to apples, that is, the enrollment reporting that we are using today compared to the enrollment that we had last year, we are up more than eight percent, eight point two percent up in overall enrollment for the university. This is the biggest enrollment increase of any university in the state of Tennessee. It is the largest freshman class that we've had in recent years. It is another record year of overall graduate student enrollment and a record number of dual enrollment students. So these are students in high school taking classes with Austin P. That is one of our biggest pipelines for building the freshman class every year, and so all of these numbers together are very impressive. The Enrollment Task Force that meets every other week at eight AM, it is eight-thirty. It is a grind, but this group pulls from across campus, from the admissions office, financial aid, marketing, athletics, alumni, the Division of Administration and Finance, housing, the Military and Veterans Affairs Division. It's a campus-wide task force of decision-makers who meet twice a month in order to ensure that we're continuing to innovate, that we're continuing to answer the questions that families have regarding the value of higher education, and it is working. And so I'm proud, I'm very, very proud of the work that this task force has done and the partnership and hard work of all of the faculty and staff across campus that leads to positive numbers like this. And so, very, very happy.
Mr. President, I want to clap about that because I mean, that enrollment increase is fabulous.
Yeah, very, very happy, very proud. Thank you. Thank you, yeah. It's a great team around campus that, you know, continues to really do great work, so very, very proud. Thank you for that. Housing opened the academic year at ninety-six percent full, and that's up from eighty-six percent last year and seventy-three percent the year previously. Testament to the hard work that our residential life folks are doing and ensuring that the environment that students have to live in is attractive and desirable. And so, very, very proud of the work that Housing and Dining is doing as well. And then finally, an eight point two percent increase in enrollment is a pretty quick increase. Our military-affiliated student enrollment is actually outpacing that. The enrollment now of military-affiliated students is up to twenty-eight percent, up from twenty-seven percent this past year. And so, we are, we're making great strides in reaching those students. And so, thank you to the board for your support in that, for approving our in-state tuition rates for any military-affiliated student in the country. That has gone a long way in helping us reach Fort Campbell students, of course, but actually nationally. And then, so we're really able to offer Austin P. to folks that might be stationed in Hawaii, Alaska, or anywhere. And so, it is working, and our students are finding us. Thank you to the donors recognized today with named spaces. Their support is crucial in maintaining a margin of excellence that allows us to do more and to be better as a university. And so, it's wonderful that we have so many that are stepping up with such generosity, and it is a pleasure to be able to recognize these people with named spaces that will honor them and their commitments to the university forever. And so, thank you for approving those names today. It matters a great deal to making sure that we're able to do a bit better and a bit more throughout the year. Thoughts on the year ahead? Ms. Whiteside indicated that my four priorities for the year and beyond are campus vitality, enrollment in all aspects. We've had great momentum, two years in a row of very, very good enrollment increases, but we need to keep the gas pedal mashed to the floor on this. Student success is, including success after graduation. As we need to continue to address the question of a return on investment for higher education, is it worth sending my kid off to college? That answer has to be yes, and one of the components of that answer has to be making sure that our students are successful in the job market when they graduate. So we need to get them to the graduation stage, but then we need to make sure that after they cross that stage, that they can launch their careers and hit their life goals, whatever those might be. And then finally, as we just saw with all of those naming approvals, we need to continue laying the groundwork for the next comprehensive campaign. That will be tied to our upcoming centennial. But there is a lot of work that Chris Phillips and Brad Avery and all of the team in AEP are doing to make sure that we are ready and that we're going to be successful in securing those additional philanthropic dollars. Chair Jenkins already made some comments at the beginning of the meeting about general luck. Luck, but at this point, I'd like to add mine. An inaugural member of the Austin P State University Board of Trustees, General Luck, was instrumental in helping chart a new course for the university. While my opportunity to work with him was brief, I was just coming on as he was leaving the board, he provided me with invaluable advice and support as I was starting here at Austin P. I can still hear his gruff words of advice to me over the phone, and he truly was the epitome of a leader and a public servant, and so I will add my thanks to his service and commitment to Austin P. Finally, your packet includes lists of contracts and agreements that have been executed and state building commission actions that have occurred. One of those actually just last week, and I'm not sure if it made it into this packet or might be the next, was the SBC's approval of our campus master plan that you approved back in June, and so that process is finished now. We have an official campus master plan, so that's a good checkbox to have. And so thank you, Chairman Jenkins. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Licari. Are there any comments or questions before we adjourn? One comment would be, Trustee Campbell Moore, we'd like to congratulate you on becoming engaged.
Thank you so much.
You know, that doesn't happen to many of us trustees. As a reminder, our next regularly scheduled meeting will take place on December sixth, twenty-twenty-four. I move that the meeting adjourn.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that the meeting adjourn. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting is adjourned.